Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Namoh Bhagavate Vasudevaya. Om Dhyana Tmiraandhasya. Chaksharanmilitam ye na Tasmay Shri Gurave Namaha. Namah Om Vishnupadaya Krishna Preshtha Yabhu Thalli. Shrimate Bhaktivedanta. Swaminithinamini. Namasthe Saraswati Deve Gauravani Prachari. Nirviseshasunyavadi Paschatyade Shatari. Jai Shri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhuvanitya Ananda. Shri Advaita Gadadhara. Shreva Sadhigaurabhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna. My humble appearance is to all the devotees who have assembled for this session. Today I was asked to speak on Ramayan. And very happy that you are starting a series of a few sessions on different characters of Ramayan beginning from today. And it's always a great source of inspiration for all of us to discuss Harikatha based on the scriptures. But when there are some festivals, there is an additional excitement for devotees to discuss Harikatha in relationship to that festival. Recently we celebrated Gorupurnima. We were having several sessions where multiple devotees were glorifying Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and sharing their understanding and appreciation and reflections on Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's mercy in various ways. And now Ramnam is coming up. Now there is meditation on Lord Ramachandra's pastimes. So it's a great fortune to be able to discuss Krishna Katha in the association of devotees. Today we will discuss a few glories of Hanumanji. One of the dear most associates of Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. In fact, the foremost associate of Lord Ramachandra. Of course, there is no difference between Ram, Krishna and Chaitanya. In that sense, although I did a mistake of saying Mahaprabhu, technically it's not wrong. In one sense, so let's discuss a few glories of Hanumanji. Hanumanji is the most trusted servant of Lord Ramachandra. He is a wonderful, incredible combination of intelligence, efficiency, etiquette and service attitude with perfect balance of emotions. So Hanumanji is known for his simplicity and intelligence both. Very intelligent people, smart and clever people are not so simple. Very simple-hearted people are not known to perform very Herculean tasks and be extremely clever and intelligent, but Hanumanji is both. You see, one day Mother Sita was applying Sindhu on her head. And Hanumanji saw that and asked her, "My dear mother, why are you applying this Sindhu on your head?" And seeing his innocence, Mother Sita said, "My dear son, if I wear this Sindhu, Lord Ramachandra will be very happy." Then after a few minutes, Hanumanji came to Sita Devi and gave a special dharshan. There is Sindhu all over his body. Okay, all over his body. Let my Ramachandra be pleased always because he likes Sindhu. So you can see the simplicity of Hanumanji's heart there. On the other hand, you see Hanumanji is extremely intelligent. Just by seeing the face of a person, he can understand how genuine is the person and how crooked is the person. When Vibhishen came to take shelter of Lord Ramachandra, all the monkeys, all the Vanara heroes were observing Vibhishen. Vibhishen came with just some four associates. He just had a dispute with Ramana, his brother. Ramana is so adamant, he was not at all in a mood to give Sita back to Lord Ramachandra. So Vibhishen repeatedly advised him, but seeing that this Ramana is extremely adamant, Vibhishen just left him and then came to take shelter for Lord Ramachandra, make friendship with Lord Ram. Then all the Vanara soldiers saw Vibhishen and said that we should not accept him. The king of all the Vanara, Sugriva said personally that Vibhishen is not trustworthy. Because Vibhishen is very, is after all from a Rakshasa dynasty. Directly he is the brother of Ramana. And maybe he is coming to us to make friendship with us just before the war so that he can understand our military secrets and then secretly send a message to Ramana, who knows his intentions. So let's not accept him as our friend. Forget accepting him as a friend. I propose that we kill him right now. There is nothing wrong in killing a Rakshasa. This is the suggestion of the Vanara king Sugriva. But Hanumanji said, "I can understand that just by his demeanor, his words, his expressions, I can understand that he has pure intentions. It's worth accepting him as an ally, a friend." So Hanumanji could figure out things which are unknown even to kings, okay? And Hanumanji is known for his strength and Herculean tasks of either bringing Sanjivani or bringing big, big boulders and mountain peaks for the construction of bridge across the ocean. And he is known to save Ram and Lakshman also from the weapon of Indrajit. He is known for many things. But he is also known for his simple, innocent devotion to Lord Ramachandra also. So Hanumanji is ever successful and the most non-controversial personality. Everybody loves Hanumanji. So different Shastri characters are seen in different perspectives by people in this world. Some people have objections. Some people can't appreciate certain characters although they are divine, they misunderstand. Even Krishna is misunderstood by some people for performing Rasalila and all. But Hanumanji is the most non-controversial personality. And he is loved by men, women, children, old people, Indians or Americans, whoever. This Hanumanji is really special, okay? So when Hanumanji just entered Ramayan, for the first time Hanumanji, when he, when his description appears in Ramayan, he meets Ram and Lakshman at Rishimuka Mountain. Ram and Lakshman were searching for Sita Devi. They came all the way to Rishimuka Mountain after meeting Jattayu, Shabari and all of them. Then as soon as Ram saw Hanumanji, he would understand that he is very intelligent. He is very learned in the Vedas. Hanumanji actually appeared in the form of a Brahmana and met Ram and Lakshman because Sugriva had sent him to find out who are these two human beings, Ram and Lakshman. So Ram said, "Anun..." Ram immediately noticed that you are my servant. So when Sugriva was searching for Sita Devi, when Sugriva had to dispatch different armies in different directions to search for Sita Devi, Sugriva had sent Hanumanji towards south because that is the most probable direction in which Sita could be found. So let Hanumanji go in this side. "Tva yeva Hanuman asti balam buddhi parakramaha." He has bal, buddhi and parakrama. Some physical strength and valor and intelligence he has. And although there are hundreds and thousands and thousands of soldiers, monkey soldiers going in different directions, Ram gave his ring only to Hanuman, not to anyone. And before even the search for Sita began, it is kind of concluded by the leaders, Ram and Sugriva, that only Hanuman will be able to do that job. Okay, so Hanuman is such a trustworthy person, okay? So in Yudhakanda of Ramayan, Indrajit released the Brahmastra and many people fainted. But Hanumanji did not faint, Vibhishen did not faint. So Vibhishen found Jambavan alive and Jambavan asked Vibhishen like this. He was, he was very tired. "Is Hanuman safe?" Then Vibhishen said, "Yes, Hanumanji is safe." If Hanumanji is safe, it's already even if no one is safe. If Hanuman is not safe, even if everyone is safe, we are not safe. Because Hanuman can revive everyone. Okay, Hanuman is the trustworthy person for Sugriva, for Jambavan, for Sita Devi, for Lord Ramachandra, for Lakshmana, for everyone, right? So even when all the Vanaras came back to Ayodhya, came to Ayodhya after rescuing Sita Devi, Ram asked Hanuman, "Hanumanji, you have done tremendous amount of service to me. What do you want? What do you want from me? Can I do something for you?" Hanuman said, "My dear Lord, let you, may you be affectionate towards me always and let me always be affectionate towards you. I don't want anything else, right? Everything else, whether I attain it or not, it doesn't matter. But I need to attain your love, your affection, right?" So Ram said, "As long as Ramakatha is going on in this world, Hanumanji's glories will be shant forever, okay?" So now Hanumanji, his heroism is seen in Sundarakanda section of Valvik Ramayan more than any other place. So Ramayan has multiple paths. First is Balakanda, then Ayodhya Kanda, Aranya Kanda, Kishkinda Kanda. In the first four Kandas, in the first three Kandas, Hanumanji's mention is not very much there. Then in Kishkinda Kanda, just Hanumanji just enters. And after that Sundarakanda, Yudhakanda. Now out of all these sections, Sundarakanda is seen as the most beautiful part of entire Ramayan. The name itself says it is Sundarakanda, okay? And in that Sundarakanda, the hero is Hanuman. Ram took a low profile. Although it's the most beautiful episode of Ramayan, Ram took a backseat and allowed Hanumanji to flourish. "Hanuman, may you be glorious. Let, may you be the king of, the hero of this episode, this section." So in Sundarakanda, Ram's role is very minimal. It's all Hanumanji only, okay? Jumping across Lanka Ocean, fighting with the demons and burning Lanka, so it's all Hanumanji. Some people say, "What is Sundarakanda? What is so sundar about Sundarakanda?" Because Ram is lamenting in separation from Sita. Sita is lamenting in separation from Ram. And all the monkey soldiers, they were lamenting on the shore of the ocean. Okay, somehow Hanumanji just jumped across the ocean and gave hope to all of them. So all scenes in Sundarakanda are hope-giving. All it begins with a hopeless situation, but it is Hanuman who brought hope in the hopeless situation in the beginning of Sundarakanda. Many people say, "What is so sundar about Sundarakanda?" Ram is sundar, Sita is sundari. This Ashok, Ashok one is very beautiful, but it's destroyed, its beauty is destroyed. Hanumanji is so beautiful. What is not beautiful in Sundarakanda? Mainly the hope that Hanumanji brings about in the hearts of everyone. He gives hope to Ram at the end. He gives hope to Vanaras at the beginning. He gives hope to Sita in the middle. And he destroys the hopes of all the Rakshasas, right? So this is the Sundarakanda where Hanumanji is the hero, who brings the story from tragedy to hope. So in the beginning of Sundarakanda, Hanumanji jumps across the Lanka Ocean, okay? So till then, all the Vanaras were thinking that who will cross this ocean? Sampati told that Sita is there on the other side. But who has the ability? Some Vanaras were saying that we'll jump 10 yojanas. "I can jump 20 yojanas, I can jump 30 yojanas," they were just saying. So Angada said finally, "I can jump 100 yojanas, 1 yojan is 8 miles." Means 800 miles they have to jump. Monkeys don't fly, okay? They have to jump, one jump, okay? So in one jump, Hanumanji has to go. Angada said, "I can go, but I cannot come back." So Hanumanji was sitting failing, "We'll go, we'll go." Then our Vibhishen, sorry, Jambavan came there. Jambavan said, "Hanuman, why are you silent? Get up. Only you have the ability to jump across the ocean." Then Hanumanji was reminded of his powers and Hanumanji jumped across. So before jumping, Hanumanji made his body so big, okay? Because Jambavan was acting like a guru and he empowered our Hanumanji by appreciating him properly, okay? Glorification and praise and appreciation empowers, strengthens and encourages. Fault-finding disempowers, weakens our determination and discourages a person. And even if there are no faults, the faults will become true if a person speaks in a very discouraging tone. So therefore, it's very important that we, as much as possible, as much as practical, we try to speak on the positive side and try to appreciate the good side of others, okay? Anyways, Hanumanji received that encouragement from Jambavan and he made his body so huge. "Ramarthan for the sake of Lord Ramachandra. Vanarthancha for the sake of all the Vanaras. Chikirsham Karma Duskaram, I am going to perform an activity which is extremely difficult to perform. Samudrasya Paramparam, I can easily cross this ocean. Dusprapam Praptumichthi, I will attain the unattainable, difficult to attain. I will do the impossible." So Hanumanji said this. So Hanumanji boasted about himself. Hanumanji boasted about his powers. "Yes, I can do it, I can do it." Why is he saying? Is Hanuman proud? Let's analyze. As the story proceeds in Sundarakanda, Hanumanji eventually meets Sita Devi. I'm not giving all Sundarakanda story now, okay? It's a short session. So Hanumanji meets Sita Devi. And Sita Devi initially doubted, but later she trusted and had a nice conversation. And at one point, Sita Devi said that, "Hanuman, you are very powerful. You have somehow crossed the ocean and you came here. Ram, Lakshman, Jambavan, Sugriva, Angada, Nala, Neela, whoever, other Vanaras, will they be able to cross this ocean like you did? Is it possible? What is hope for me to be rescued?" Then to encourage Sita Devi, you know what Hanumanji said, "My dear mother, in Sugriva's army, I am the weakest monkey. Every soldier, Vanara in Sugriva's army is either equal to me in strength or greater than me in strength. No one is inferior to me," he said that. Now the same Hanuman on the other side of the ocean boasted about his powers. "I can go to Kailash, I can just roam around, means circumambulate Mandara Mountain, Miru Mountain, I can destroy Lanka, I can burn Lanka, I can defeat Ramana," he was just boasting like anything on the other side of the ocean. But here, he's humbling himself. He's just saying that, "I, my dear mother, I am the most insignificant member of Sugriva's army. Who is sent as a messenger, the weakest people are sent as messenger. I didn't come here to fight. I came here to give a message. I am the weakest person." Sugriva's army has great heroes, celebrated heroes who are more powerful than me are at least equal to. No one is less than. So here he's humbling himself, then he was boasting about himself. In both cases, Hanumanji's focus was not on boasting or humbling himself. He's humble only. He's not proud at all. But he was concerned about the emotions of others. All the monkeys, Vanaras, they were very despondent. They were very discouraged. They were very concerned and anxious. Who will cross this ocean? Who will fulfill the mission? Sugriva, our king, should not become upset. If you don't fulfill his desire, then he will punish us also. They were all very anxious. Hanumanji wanted to encourage the anxious monkeys. Therefore, to reassure them, he boasted about his powers. In this case, Sita Devi was anxious whether other monkeys will be able to cross the ocean or not. To encourage her, Hanumanji minimized his prowess and he boasted about other Vanaras, right? So earlier he was boasting, now he is presenting himself inferior. In both cases, he wanted to encourage devotees. He wanted to reassure devotees. He wanted to give confidence to Sita here. He wanted to give confidence to Vanaras there. This is the attitude of a Vaishnavah. A Vaishnavah is not in, not about, not so much into announcing one's own glories or minimizing oneself out of low self-esteem or self, lack of self-respect, etc., etc., all the modern terminology you can put there, okay? So a Vaishnavah doesn't have a sense of superiority complex or inferiority complex. A Vaishnavah is focused on service to the Lord and encouraging and serving the devotees also. That's the focus of a Vaishnavah, okay? So this is the greatness of Hanumanji. So Hanumanji, when he was crossing this Lanka Ocean, he saw Maynakam Mountain. So this Maynakam Mountain came from the depths of the ocean and offered hospitality to Hanuman. "Hanumanji, you have to go a long way. Why don't you just stay on my summit, on my mountain for some time? Take some rest, then you can continue your journey." Then Hanumanji said, "My dear Maynakam Mountain, I am very grateful to you for this hospitality, but I am in a hurry now. When the mission is yet to be achieved and when time is less, you can't take breaks." Hanumanji was not in a mode of taking breaks. Hanumanji just... Hare Krishna, something came here, yeah. Hanumanji just acknowledged the service of Maynakam Mountain and he moved ahead. So that is the focus, that is the one-pointed attention of Hanumanji, okay? So this is the Vivasayakma Kabbuddhi of Hanumanji. So next, Hanumanji moved ahead, then he found the mother of Nagas, Surasa. She opened her mouth wide to swallow Hanumanji, to kill Hanumanji, to eat Hanuman. You know what Hanumanji said, "My dear mother, let me just go." But Surasa said, "Brahma has given me a boon. Whoever comes on my way should enter my mouth." That is the boon that I received from Brahma. You must honor the boon. But Hanumanji said, "Oh, is it so? I must honor Brahma's boon. What you said is correct. But can you please give me some time? I am on my way to Lanka. I will go find Sita Devi, come back and give this message to Lord Ramachandra, then I can enter your mouth. Till then, please wait." She said, "Am I so fool or stupid to believe that you will come back and enter my mouth? That you are a monkey. How can I believe your words? You should just enter right now, okay?" Then Hanumanji said, "No, no, mother, please don't say like that. I am, I have to do this service. Okay, give me some time. I will definitely fulfill your desire." But Surasa did not listen. Surasa expanded her mouth so wide, so big, 10 yojanas wide. Hanumanji expanded his body also 10 yojanas big. Then Surasa expanded her mouth 20 yojanas wide. Then Hanumanji expanded the body, his body, 20 yojanas tall. So like that, 30, 30, 40, 40, 50, 50, 100, 100, okay? So when Surasa opened her mouth so wide that it became 100 yojanas wide, then Hanumanji immediately became as small as a fly and just entered into her mouth and within no time he just came out and said, "My dear mother, I fulfilled Brahma's boon. I entered your mouth, but I came out, okay?" Seeing that intelligence and clever activity done by Hanumanji, Surasa became very impressed and blessed. "Hanumanji, may you be successful in your mission." What is the lesson here? Hanumanji is teaching us that we should not get into any egoistic competitions with others. We should focus on our seva. So let me focus on my service of searching Sita Devi. My job is not to prove my superiority over Surasa. I am not here to prove that I can expand my body as much as are much bigger than Surasa's mouth. That's not my concern. That's not my lookout. I am supposed to be serving the Lord. So in that service, to accomplish that service, sometimes I may have to take a low position. There's nothing wrong in putting your step back. It's not necessary that we should always be leading in front only. We should stand behind also sometimes if necessary. So my job is not to get into any egoistic competition with this lady. My job is to serve the Lord. So you'll do the needful. So Surasa found Hanumanji extremely powerful and intelligent and she blessed. So when we have humility, when we keep our ego aside and we cultivate humility, then we receive all blessings. But if we are very egoistic and stubborn, we may win the argument, but we will lose the relationship. What is our lookout? You want to establish your superiority over other people or you want to have friendly relationships with others? It's our choice. So moving ahead, Hanumanji was just traveling, soaring through the sky, just about to reach the other side of the ocean, but he was unable to move ahead. The reason was that when another demoness named Simhika, she held on to Hanumanji's shadow and was not allowing him to move. Hanumanji noticed, "Oh, this is not like Nagamata Surasa. She is a demoness. She is just catching me out of her envy." So Hanumanji just rushed into her body and pierced her heart, pierced her chest and then came out, killed her basically, okay? So sometimes when we are serving the lord or when we are doing some good activity, there are always some people who try to pull us down out of envy. So we should curb envy. We need not, in the name of humility or tolerance or patience, we need not allow ourselves to get exploited. We don't have to trouble ourselves or allow ourselves to get tortured by the envious activities done by others. We should protect ourselves from that envy, from that jealous attacks by others. So Hanumanji just removed the obstacle of envy and jumped across the ocean, okay? Then finally he, and at the entrance also, there is Lankini. She blocked Hanumanji's entrance, but Hanumanji just stopped. Defeated Lankini and then he moved ahead and found Sita Devi, encouraged her, reassured her, destroyed the Ashoka Vatika and burned the entire Lanka. And then finally came back to Lord Ramachandra and gave the good news, okay, to Ram. So Ram became extremely blissful. Hanumanji considers himself as an arrow of Lord Ramachandra. I am like an arrow that is released by Lord Ramachandra's bow. So this is the mood of Hanumanji. Even though Hanumanji accomplished many things, Hanumanji's mood was, "It is Lord Ramachandra's accomplishment. Only by his grace I could achieve this, otherwise I am nothing." So Hanumanji is teaching us that we all should be in this consciousness of being a servant of Lord Ramachandra and are servant of Krishna or Vishnu or Narayana or Lord Chaitanya, whoever is your favorite deity, okay? So we need to be servants of the lord and we need to consider ourselves as instruments in lord's hands, not independent accomplishers, but instruments. So we are not meant to be in this accomplishment consciousness. We are supposed to be in instrument consciousness. So it is said that best servant is one who accomplishes more than the duty interested by the master. A mediocre servant is one who never attempts to do more than what master orders, although capable. A worse servant is one who does not even complete the job given by the master. Hanumanji is undoubtedly the best servant of Lord Ramachandra, okay? So it's our great fortune that we are meditating on the glorious activities and qualities of Hanumanji. So let us offer this prayer to Lord Ramachandra and Hanuman to give us that necessary strength and determination and intelligence and devotion to serve the lord to the best of our capacity and peace. Thank you very much.